Take two. I'd like to call to order this board of education regular meeting Tuesday, June 19th, 2024 at 7:02 PM. Can I get a good call?
Mrs. Theodore, here. Mrs. McPhillips?
Here.
Mrs. Brilac Garnfield? Mrs. Deh?
Here.
Mrs. Lala?
Here.
Mr. Berardi?
Here.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Here. We have a call. Please can you request a lead us to select by standing in the order of order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under that indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Permission statement. This is the mission of North School District 80 is inspiring, spiritual excellence, and a nurturing environment. Let's celebrate the success.
So at this time, I would like to celebrate two of our eighth grade students who are now alumni of North School District 80. The first is Alexandra Chaparro. Alexandra Chaparro was nominated and won the West Forty Scotty Award. And this is what actually was said. Alexandra is an exceptional school citizen who models for others to emulate. Alexandra has a strong work ethic and excels in her academic pursuits. She is not only passionate about activities going on throughout the school, but consistently does her best to make each day positive for all those around her. At the event, I do have a video clip on there. I don't know, is that, do you wanna? Are you able to or?
Is it not coming up? Okay.
Alexandra Chaparro, for Giles Elementary School. Alexandra has a strong work ethic and exceeds in her academic pursuits. She is not only passionate about activities going on throughout the school, but consistently does her best to make each day positive for all those around her.
So that took place on March... That took place on March 20th at West Lightning High School. And that is through West Forty, which is our regional office. This is a huge accomplishment, a huge award. So congratulations to Alexandra on an amazing, amazing job. Would you like to share with everyone something, a goal that you had for yourself? Or just anything basic you would like to share?
Just the human, some of the reports of all last week. Cause it's like a real hard for you to get consistent with these guys out of school.
She did a wonderful job. She constantly strive. We talk about what it means to be Giles maid. And Alexandra is a student that is Giles maid. So nice job. So our next individual that I would like to recognize is Nathan Ryan. Now Nathan received the Ralph A. Gibert Award. Ralph A. Gibert was a teacher, a principal, and a superintendent here in North School District 80 for many years. Mr. Gibert, upon his retirement, the Board of Education had this award that is given to an eighth grade student. That each middle school teacher is asked to nominate any eighth grade student who strongly possesses the following qualities. And these are qualities that Mr. Gibert held very high. Positive attitude, integrity, compassion, leadership, honor, responsibility, cooperation, and service. So again, our eighth grade faculty and staff nominated students. And at the end, Nathan Ryan was the winner. So congratulations, Nathan. And as you see on this slide, what a wonderful picture. This happened on June 5th after our graduation. Our president, Mr. Trubuzio, was able to share this great announcement at graduation and announced it. And he had, as you see in the picture, is proudly wearing his medal. And he currently has his medal on, so thank you for bringing that. Can you share with everyone what your, you know, how this year went? And what you did to set yourself up for success?
So hello, my name is Nathan Ryan. I was 2024 Ralph A. Gibert Award winner. I first like to thank all of my teachers for this honor. I would definitely like to thank my faculty for making me become the first star of the team. I am honored and very thankful for this award. This award really means a lot to me because it shows how hard, how hard I've worked for it. Thank you for this award. It seems to be my best version of me. Thank you once again.
As everyone is fully aware, at Giles School, we talk a lot about what it means to have pride in yourself, being positive, respectful, responsible, inclusive, determined, and engaged. We have an extensive program that we begin with our fifth graders and it goes all the way up through eighth grade. And Nathan is, and being having pride is being Giles maid. And Nathan, you'll as well are Giles maid. So thank you so much for all your great work. At this time, if we could get the Board of Education and our two students to have a picture, we'd like to take a picture and place it proudly on our school district's website. Again, congratulations. And I'm very positive, I did it in, I'm under one minute. I said 7:10 and it's 7:09, so nice job, yeah. That's sometimes difficult for me. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
So another celebration. We want to just stop for a moment. We haven't had board meetings since May 14th. Celebrate the end of the 2324 school. We leave on it very well with the celebration for our retirees, Patty Newbush and Rena Bell of York. Funny thing is Rena Bell is there at Summer School, so we say goodbye to her, but we're here in the next day pretty much. But she will be retiring at the end of Summer School. Had a wonderful celebration on that last day. That was put together by many, many people and a lot of wonderful teachers that were here and celebrated our end of the year, the 2324 school. So that's been a wonderful celebration.
Any more success?
Yeah, we can also just celebrate all of our students who hit those different milestones. Thinking of our kindergartners who are now moving into first grade. And our fourth graders who are now moving into the next step of their educational journey of Giles. Just really proud of all of our students that leave and take a moment to reflect on this.
Do you consider motion to approve the agenda as modified with the rule of actual on? Okay, can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, uh, uh, ten, and, I don't know, second, ten, and...
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Deh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Berardi?
Yes.
Mr. Trubuzio?
Yes. Motion passed. Recognition of visitors. Teachers here tonight. Correspondents, ready to go? On participation. No, thank you. There was one player request. To be read and reviewed in the district lesson. I'll choose presentation starting with the school improvement plan.
Good evening. We're really excited to be here this evening to present our school improvement plan. And next slide is to add some photos of the team that worked on this plan. Now all of us are maybe a little bit weird tonight, but it's the show radio up in school, we're at the...
From Lindy High, I'm a junior teacher here.
Hillary Polly, first grade teacher, please.
Felix, second, fourth grade teacher. Catch up with the rookie teacher.
I don't know if it's so familiar, it's all three of us. This is our admission and vision statement that kind of guides us in our decision-making process while making our school improvement plan. And this should make you inspiring, educational excellence, and nurturing environment. And our vision with our students, our focus of all behavior and origin, student-centered classroom, and a dynamic, lively, innovative, working environment. Our ministry is to give you the step to set high standards and safe measuring and positive social environment with a good character and to take on the picture of the campus.
So here you see a little snapshot of our student graphics. This is taken from the school report card from 2023. So this, the numbers are a little bit, well, are different in present time than they are right here. But from at that point, we had about 610 students. And you can see the demographic breakdown. 69% light, 70% Hispanic, 11% Asian, and 2.5% Latino. If you look at our free or reduced lunch status, we're currently at 44% students who are qualified for their reduced lunch. Now that's something to point out because the year prior to that, it was at 28%. So that was 28%. 32% of our students are multi-legal learners. And that also has increased from 28% the year before. And 14% of our students have individualized education programs. And that number did go down just a little bit in that year because we were previously at 68%.
We like to think that these schools are a great place and we have a lot of great things going on here. We like to acknowledge some of the strengths we have going on. We have a robust curriculum to give our students everything they need, especially in the math area, which are serious. We adapted the new language arts program for our third grade educators called magnetic reading, which we say is going very well. Also, we have implemented the use of a new social studies curriculum for grades K through four, Studies Weekly. And we have our science curriculum, which we're actively utilizing this year as well, called Stencilscope. Besides all those academic areas, we like to provide the students a well-rounded education. And they have these specials. We are fortunate to provide our students with gym, art, music, and library resources. And we're also proud and excited about the new student program that we're having come to our way this year. We also offer after-school support opportunities for students. And those included for the first time this year, an IAR prep program for our third graders so they can get more readily, a bit readily prepared to succeed in it, which was well received by the students and the teachers equally. And we also have our social emotional curriculum to help the students navigate their emotions because learning is so impacted and your overall sense of self-confidence is impacted by your social emotional ability. So those are strengths that really benefit our students here.
Continuing to add one of those strengths. A big addition to our gap routine this year was the addition of the math group time. So we're able to get kids into what they need as far as math groups for times of weeks. That's been super helpful. Increased family engagement opportunities. We had grade level evenings where we invite families, make kids come back to the evening and do variety activities in various from grade to grade a little bit. But those have been so much love, well-received. Noticing a lot of family engagement opportunities this year as well. Some learning offerings, as you know, Summer School is underwriting and this bike program as well. Lots of progress updating our school facilities, which will continue to be outside of some measures, as well as improvements in school security. So lots of things that are really kind of long time coming and it's nice to see them being put into place. So, continuing to add new features. Well, at first, I covered the first picture, but we see three, see if we have preschool classrooms. They are so great, so we've not even recognized that areas being a very, we see now, where it's higher in the building. Co-teacher workspace, so each special ethical teacher has designated office slash workspace for them, for themselves, upgraded plate system from the ceilings. Fab door entries, that's been put on a lot of different doors at this point. And eventually all the doors will have fabs at them. District office space, which is a beautiful meeting area. Eighty-eight bathrooms, which helps have the gym there. Backrooms used to, lunch rooms has been a major because kids no longer have to spend five minutes up, five minutes down. They can go to the back and it's down there already and get back together for lunch. New furniture and paint in there in fourth grade bathrooms, this gas here. And then this puppy here will be first and second grade using wheels. So let's say about that.
And lights too, you see how bright it is in there, room?
Yeah, it's amazing.
How do you think about it?
Another strength in this school that we're particularly proud of is our pride program, which has been going on for a long time. And the whole premise of the pride program was to build a sense of confidence, a sense of community for students within themselves, within each other, in their school. We use that to build our PBIS mantra, which is we say we respectful, we responsible. Establish that common language from early on, so everybody's buying in and is held more accountable with those things. We also celebrate each other for various things. Students are recognized for all their efforts and again, that adds to their confidence. We believe in that sense of community and we do engage in activities that help the children know that there's a world bigger than them and that they're part of it with our holiday food drive and our coin drive and our kindness week. And all those things help the students, again, be provided with that well-rounded education.
Right, the front side, the channels. So what's a great strength, Bill, so we got some challenges. I don't know, the temperature regulation. Some classrooms are on temperature, whereas other classrooms, we have some. We have been getting underway a lot of the accessibility of these bathrooms. But there are still some places here and there that are still not successful. Plumbing, though flooding has not been happening as much. There's been some flooding, plumbing issues in the bathrooms. And so there's some, the non-functioning play space, the footprint. That particular way on the top left is our courtyard. Playground is great here, but the landscaping has not really go up. The drainage issues have been pretty good there. And those are the things for the landscape because I'm all about solar rain to just turn it down. But then I probably think some of the existing that they're missing. So some non-functioning play spaces there. And multiple spaces are still being updates. Most spaces have been made those with furniture and improvements, but there are still some areas that are... And some academic and social emotions, you know, this. One of them being our math scores are not growing at the same rate as we do their scores. Each new curriculum for the education portion, I'll look at, that's one of the areas that we are trying to change. Shifting to a new program of multi-legal learners, especially increasing multi-legal learners. Shifting to a new program, hoping to work towards support those, uh, students. And continuing to grow the social emotions. We have a lot of good systems put in place. It's not completed, finalized yet, but there's some kind of, it's still in progress.
So in putting together this school improvement plan, we had to look at a lot of different pieces of data. Things like our I-R-E scores, some of the historical math scores from prior years. Looking at those demographics that this year, we do see a growing population, is another thing that we're looking at closely. As well as, you know, just trying to look at some of the perception of it. You know, we're doing some staff surveys and parent surveys. And putting all that together to see where we go from here. So our next steps were, okay, after looking at that data, then identifying problem statements. You know, some of those things that we noticed in the... So in our most recent I-R-E map data, we had 64% of our students making expected gains, meeting their individualized growth target. You know, our goal for that was, you know, 70% at that point. So, you know, we felt short of where we wanted to be. And looking at our reading data, we were at 68% of students making those expected gains. So close to that 70, but not quite where we wanted to be there. And then looking at our problem statement number three, this one is a goal that we shifted a little bit, moving into this next school improvement plan. Because we are focusing more on building our PBIS system. And when looking at our PBIS system, we have to look at the fidelity tool or the assessment that we're taking, how we're implementing that system. And what we're using is called PBIS tiered fidelity inventory. And so we crafted a goal for this upcoming school improvement plan based on that tiered fidelity inventory, so we can continue to build our PBIS system.
So to adjust these problem areas and to help our students improve in those leading areas. The first goal we have established has to do with math. Our goal is to get 70% of our students to make their individualized growth goal based on their I-R-E reading data. And as you have said, our students are not progressing as rapidly in terms of math as in language arts. So we are making that our goal for this upcoming school.
Now our second goal for real life, we saw a jump last year, we made it to 68%. So close to our 70% goal, although I'm confident that this year with 70% of our students making their individualized growth goal based on our I-R-E reading data.
Yes, it's 70 to go based on the PBIS tiered fidelity inventory. We are currently at 48% implementation. The goal we set is that by the end of this upcoming school year, 2425, we will advance by 10%.
So when thinking about that, you know, without goals and the plans to reach that, we're like a ship at a set sail with no destination. So we can't just have a goal, but we gotta actually have that action plan to carry out to set us on a path of where we want to be. That's what we're gonna talk about here with this next graph. And you'll see right at the center is MTSS. That's our multi-tiered system. That is the umbrella of which everything else that we do in our school falls underneath. And that's where we talk about those peer mates and the multi-tiers and what we do for everyone, what we do for some of our students, and how we reach those students for our school in the most. That's kind of where that multi-tiered system comes into place. But you have to look at this through a wide lens and a variety of different areas. So our first area is focusing on our professional learning communities, which is building that collective teacher advocacy of our teacher teams. Focus around the four PLC questions. What we want students to know, how we're gonna know they learned it, what we're gonna do when they, you know, when they got that, and then what we're gonna do when maybe they didn't quite understand it. And having that be the basis of our grade level TV so that we were constantly planning and going through this continuous growth cycle on a smaller scale within each grade level TV. And that takes some time to build that as a system so that everyone is aware of the pieces that go into that, so that we can make those assessments possible. So we're, you know, still on that PLC journey, but that's something we want to continue to do and believe that that will definitely make a difference for our students.
Because like on the parenting community engagement, even being aligned after all the student grades that have been in the district grade levels, American League, the reading night, and also our music and our fights. Also continue those parenting diversity, so parents can be completely informed of what's going on in their schools and what happens to their students at home. So continuing that, a different couple of separate answers as well. Along with that, something that the teachers completed is a needs assessment for what kind of machine you know that teachers is definitely in the school. So putting that action into place and seeing what needs are sort of there. Do some of the sharing, um, things like...
Number four, the flexible grouping. We remain committed to allow our students the flexibility to work in groups so they can focus on their areas of needed improvement as well as their strengths and maximize their own learning on our educational back.
Um, Dan Wilson, this year we're gonna take the kids' diagnostic numbers or results from I-R-E math, I-R-E reading, taking the fall assessment to make that help them set goals moving forward so that we have a goal in place for their winter venture, a goal in place for their spring venture. We really hope to put that with them and have them making meaning for that so that they can see where they're starting and where they want to go.
And for our last goals, we need to use of our multi-technical waters. We're gonna build a school conference of academic vocabulary through our online collaboration. All right, continuing our...
Alright, so this graphic just will help us talk a little bit about our third goal, which is focused around social learning capabilities supports. Because that is really refining our PBIS. And when we look at our PBIS system, so often we tend to think in education about like that here. And, you know, that's really where that multi-tiered system of support comes into place. But there's so much more to it. There's maybe some really, we have the systems in place that, you know, based on the data decision rules, makes the, make the process simple to understand. So it's not like you're waiting on one person to answer a question, but that we know what is needed based on what a student needs. We have to look at the practices, that's classroom practices. And what are some of those things that we want to see happening in all of our classrooms to better support students from that central classroom, that is a pillar of our performance. And then how are we connecting that with the data? And what is the data telling us about our practices in our systems? Because sometimes we might find that the data is showing us that there's something missing within our practices or within our system, and that tells us that we gotta do something different. But that's why you see those circles now overlap and, you know, there's some area in between and in the middle. And we have, I believe, when we're looking at that, we're thinking that every student is being what they need through this system, through the data, through the practices that we are implementing here. So really, we're talking about providing our PBIS system. We're making sure that we are working through that tiered fidelity inventory or that we're making those improvements in those areas so that we can continue to support all students, social learning, and behavior well within the school. And then just following up, we're gonna make sure that we're monitoring this plan. We have, you know, one of the building leadership key meetings. There's both constantly be checking in. There's also those checkpoints that we bring to the board of education to just say, hey, here's where we're at, just so that way you're aware and informed on how we're implementing our plan and where things are at, at all of our acting steps. And then just to end with a little quote there, without the two or three words of progress, such words as improvement, achievement, and success. Thanks for your feedback on that. And if you have any questions, please happy to answer. And if you have any questions, please have a answer.
I have a question. If you're monitoring on a monthly basis and you see that one month it looks like we're going the wrong way, and then you monitor more closely the second month, you're still down a little bit, at what point do you redefine your monitoring goals?
Yeah, that's a good question. You always need to be flexible to adjust to the needs that are presented at the time. I think it also depends on a particular area. So we're trying to, within our system, we're trying to build in a fidelity piece of monitoring things that we're going along, so that way we're not waiting for a yearly plan to come up to monitor, but we're catching things along the way. So that is something that, for example, that tiered fidelity inventory through our SEV goal, that's something that our tier-two, tier-three committee will actually be reviewing on a monthly basis. Because they're kind of saying, alright, so the students who might be receiving a social emotional behavior-like support group for an academic concern, or an emotional concern, or maybe they need a pro-social studies group, how are they actually doing, what is their progress looking like? And then we're able to look at that data more in an aggregate form, just to kind of make sure that students are making that goes on. And we'll also be doing the same for our academic intervention committees, just looking at that from a tier-two to tier-three, right? So the students who are, you know, falling a little bit behind, how are we monitoring that? To make sure that they are even making progress. So that's something we're definitely building within our system, so that way we are able to catch those. And we're able to adjust the plan that are supporting those students. Because the last thing we want to do is to keep a support in place that really isn't benefitting.
So great job to our lead staff, nice job, well done. So here at Child School, we spend many, many meetings throughout the year having the same discussions as the lead team as well. And on this year's school improvement team is, of course, myself, Mrs. Eric, this is the principal, Mrs. Fig, Mr. Navorka, who's not here, unfortunately is out of town, Mrs. Pietrowski, Mr. Browder, Mrs. DeVito, who unfortunately is out of town as well, Mr. Nickerson, and Mr. Coletta, who's also out of town as well. So thank you for being here. So this makes up our team. We spend a lot of time together. In fact, Wednesday mornings is when, you know, school starts for everyone, it is at eight-twenty. We are in the building at around seven o'clock, seven fifteen, and we're meeting for an hour before school starts, having these discussions, kind of figuring out everything, reviewing data. And we'll talk more about that as later in the presentation. But just wanted just to share the team.
This year at Child School, we have one hundred and fifteen students in our fifth grade, one hundred and nineteen students in sixth grade, one hundred and twenty-nine students in seventh grade, and one hundred and thirty students in eighth grade. We have twenty-nine certified teachers, five paraprofessionals, one school nurse, four support staff, and two building administrators. And those numbers have stayed relatively steady throughout the past few years. And at our At Child, we focus on being Child's maid, which we define as pride. He being positive, are respectful, responsible, I inclusive, be determined, and he engaged. And our PDIS system of rewards is based on pride. And throughout the years, we have focused on what does pride look like in the classroom? What does pride look like in the hallway? How can we have pride in the gym? And making sure that we're intentionally teaching the students the expectations in every space in a school.
We also have pride leaders, that typically are eighth grade students, but typically it can be southern eighth grade students. And these pride leaders are students that are Child's maid students, that go out and support other students, support staff. And you'll see many of these pride leaders at events here at Lee School. Many of the programs that they have here at Lee, in the PTA spots typically, like mother-daughter, I'm sorry, mother-son dodgeball, father-daughter dance. You'll see many of the pride leaders here supporting Lee School as well as the new At Child School.
So the data shows that we have eighteen percent multilingual students, eight percent students with IEPs, and forty-four percent pre-learners students.
So last year, we had sixteen percent ML students. So we had a two percent increase. Last year, we had nine percent students with IEPs, so we had a one percent drop. And then last year, we had thirty-four percent students that were free and reduced. So we do see that ten percent increase.
Okay, we have focused on a few of our school's rights, so these are just a couple of them. The first one is the library media center and STEAM labs. So these are obviously areas the students enjoy. They're able to get extra opportunities in these areas and get different educational opportunities. So that's a big plus in the school. Another is the academic achievement and acceleration. So Child School is at or above the state or national average averages. And we have programs within the school that allow students to advance based on their scores and their ability level, so in the areas of language arts and math. But then also, we partner with Bridgewood, we text people to Bridgewood a year early or two, for the, in some cases, a net visitor status as well. Third is the parent and community involvement. So parents are very supportive of the staff and the family of the school district. They show up for the students' conferences, they participate in, you know, things that are due for the community, like the hand food drive and the beauty retreats, all of those things. And then our fourth strength is our pride and Child's maid programs, our PDIS. So again, the students love to earn the PDIS points, helps with their behavior, it helps with them being positive, respectful, all of those things. And they enjoy the assemblies and the interconnectivity, so those are four of our strengths.
So in our SIF plan, it's a fifty-nine page document. And we have many more school strengths, but we wanted just to highlight these four that we deemed very important. And many of these things are community collective work. For example, the Board of Education, the Norwich Scholes Foundation, and even the Norwood Park Township. Without their support, we can't have any of these wonderful things that we have in our school. One thing that we're really excited about with our library media center is fourteen thousand dollars in new library books that we get to put into the students' hands. When we worked as a team to redefine that space, we wanted to figure out what did we want to do? There's so much one-on-one with the Chromebooks, the technology. So as a staff, we said, we want to go back to that old library system where we're actually physically putting a book in a student's hand. And I'm excited to say fourteen thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty new additional titles that we're putting in the Child's Media Center, so that is really outstanding. Again, PTA with four purchasing this school year alone, the uniforms, as you heard me sharing at the many board meetings. Their support is unbelievable, we're really appreciative of that. So we really wanted to talk about these four thing areas, but we have many more school strengths than we have in our school improvement plan.
Okay, these are our expected gains in math. So this is the percentage of students who met or exceeded their expected growth goals. Can we hear it a few times? I know we want to talk about fifth grade for changing the curriculum.
So in fifth grade, if you look over here, you see a number. So what we do as a team, as a math department team, we come together and we review the data and figure out where are we going? We look at scope and sequence, we look at are we teaching something after the IAR testing? So, you know, when we research and do all that, so specifically in fifth grade, we do really well in geometry. And we look at that data, why are we doing well in geometry? Well, it's simplified at the fifth grade level with the different shapes. As we get into sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we see that geometry is taught more at the end of the school year. And so as a team, we look at how can we restructure that? So that we're giving them that support, so that when they do take that IAR exam, that they will have that knowledge and understanding. So using our priority standards, working and educating everyone along the board throughout the entire process is key. The other thing is the curriculum, as Mrs. Fig was talking about. What we identified was third and fourth grade have I-ready math. Fifth grade had, oh my gosh, what's it, uh, Ready Gen, no, that was, uh... Mag, no, that was leading for math. See, we don't have that anymore, I can't remember it off the top of my head. But then we, so we had a different curriculum in the fifth grade, and then we went to digits for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So within that standard, there's three separate curriculums. So what we've identified as a team is that consistency. So we moved to I-ready math, which is the same curriculum that they have here at Lee School. So a student that is coming from Lee with their I-ready math will now have that I-ready math curriculum next year. So we're gonna have, we're providing that additional professional development support to our staff, so that they have those skills, those resources. And we're really hoping by focusing on that and making that little change with that curriculum, that we're going to see better, better results. Also, what we want to do is we want to focus on tier-two within the classroom setting. So one of the things that we've done is taken small U-shaped tables and placing them in the math classrooms, in the ELA classrooms. So then we have more small group instruction, so that we can work with those students. But we want to make sure that we're focused, we're working on that tier-one, but we want who are our experts, our teachers, our math teachers, our ELA teachers. We want them focusing on that tier-two as well. But we also have for that tier-two, that tier-three, we put in that after-school program last year to support students in the areas of math, reading, multilingual, SEV. We wanted to make sure we're providing that support. But also in WIN class as well, we have our, at our lower grade levels, you may see, for example, in fifth grade, I'm sorry, sixth grade next year, we're going to have in our WIN class, two teachers teaching math. Because what we're doing is having our math, our sixth grade math teacher focusing on the students that are below grade level, really supporting them. And then having another teacher coming in, working with our students that are at that tier-two, close to moving out, back to a tier-one. So we'll have another teacher focusing with those students in the area of math. And that's something we identified as a team and that we're restructuring and we're putting in place for our sixth grade, because that's where the data is leading.
Okay, and then these would be our expected gains, again, the percentage of students who met or received their growth goal in the area of math.
Same thing, we have, for our ELA, our growth for fifth grade went up compared to last school year. And one of the things that we did, same concept that we did that were making that change in math last year, the change that we made, or this year for math, for last year, we made the change in ELA. So we got rid of Ready Gen, which was part of that SABAS curriculum that our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders use, which is called My Perspectives. And what we did is we went to what Lee School uses for third and fourth grade, which is called magnetic reading. So we took that same curriculum and we're putting, we put it in fifth grade last year. And we're really, we're trying to support that students. We want that consistency, so they're not going from curriculum to a different curriculum, then to a third different curriculum throughout that process. We focus on our WIN. Our WIN is restructured, so students are getting their tier-one in reading, writing, listening, and in speaking. So we focus on that area, as I had talked about. Our ELA department, they come together throughout that PLC process. We review the data, we look over scope and sequence. One of the things that we identified is poetry. Poetry was taught at the end of the school year. Poetry is on IAR. So what we did is we restructured and put a portion of poetry up in front. Now, that's good, that's great, but we also, there's only so much time that we have. So when we move something, well, something else has to move too. But we looked at the data, so that we're not taking something that is, everything is important, but we're looking at those areas, where can we tweak it a little, so that we're still providing the necessary support, but making sure we're hitting all those priority standards within the ELA sector.
So our goals for coming school year. So our first goal is the math achievement goal. Seventy percent of our students will make their individualized growth goal based on I-Ready math for grades cover grade five, and NWPA math for grades six through eight from the screen, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, to the screen of twenty-four, twenty-five. Similarly, in ELA, our goal will be seventy percent of our students will make their individualized growth goal based on I-Ready reading for grade five, and NWPA math for grades six through eight from the screen of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, to the next layer screen of twenty-four, twenty-five. Our goal for our two-year goal for SEV is how much is delivery growth this year of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five will decrease by ten percent in comparison to our school year of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-one year. How are we going to achieve those goals?
Before we do that, one thing I would like to jump in. For our goal one and goal two, what you see is, so we're phasing out math and WPA very slowly. So at Lee School, they use the I-Ready as their diagnostic testing. So what we're doing is, we want to make sure we have historical data. So we're phasing it in, so for this coming school year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, our sixth through eighth graders, as you see in our goal, the way it's written, they will still continue to be using the math NWPA. But our fifth graders will not take that math test assessment. They will only take the I-Ready diagnostic for reading and also for math. And so we're going to be able to take that historical data through their time here at Lee School and then carry that over. Another big support is branching minds, which is a really, it's our data warehouse, but it's a wonderful tool for staff to really go in and specifically look at each student to see where any deficiencies may be and meet that student where they're at, based on the ultimate goal is of hitting our mark where we need to, where we need to be and where we want to go. So I'm sorry.
Alright, how do we get there? How do we achieve our goals? For math, we want to utilize screening and academic data to make sure that students are appropriately scheduled and rigorous classes. We want to give the math department to facilitate PLC's professional learning communities. And maintain the Child's MTSS committee. We'll identify and deliver professional development to staff and review recommendations for tier-two and tier-three students. For ELA, again, we want to review that data, make sure the kids are scheduled strategically in the right classes, the right amount of rigor. We want teachers to provide additional data in areas like speaking, listening, writing, reading, to make sure that we increase student achievement. And again, utilize the MTSS committee. We'll identify and deliver professional development for our tier-two, tier-two and tier-three students. When it comes to social emotional behavior, we want to develop a program for students who are chronically absent, who need it in the building. Gen counseling based on My Savers, Savers data, when it comes to social emotional like that. We want teachers and parents to be provided with professional development. When it comes to behavior management, we want to continue all of the second step program to ensure that our students are Child's maid, are deliberate. And we all have to know positive behaviors by continuing to promote PDIS, giving those points out, providing those incentives for kids to want to do the right things. It's a great program, we just have to make sure we're using it consistently and frequently.
One of the things that I've talked about already that is going to be a heavy focus on next school year is that in math and ELA, is that tier-two taking place in that classroom, that small group setting, really to support our students, our needed students, to get them to where they need to be. Also, for our SEV, one of the things that we're doing next year that's going to be new is during WIN class, so during WIN, we focus on, all students, if you're in a tier-one, we're focusing on reading, writing, speaking, listening. We taught, we do grammar, vocabulary, novel reading, um, throughout the, the Monday through Friday. And then what we also do is support the, our students that identify as a tier two. Uh, we, we give them that extra support if it's math. We give them with that extra support with the math teacher. If it's ELA, we give them that extra support with the ELA teacher. Our multilingual, our, our students that are moving in and speak, um, Ukrainian, or Polish, which is our high needs over at Giles. Moving for next year, we, we hired a Polish, uh, ML teacher. We hired a Ukrainian, uh, ML teacher to really focus on, on those students. But also providing a WIN time with our ELL teachers because we have certain staff in our building that are also have a, a certificate in ELL, English Language Learning. But what we wanna do next year with our SEV group specifically is we wanna focus on our students that are struggling, our repeat offenders. Our repeat offenders that are not able to consistently follow our, the expectations of, of the building. And these students that are not qualified for a tier two or tier three math or ELA or ML will be in a group that's called a SEV, SEV WIN group. And those are with teachers that have been strategically, uh, placed in that position. They will be working with those students, reteaching specific areas where they need those specific skills, uh, in our, uh, in our second step curriculum. And then we also have our digital citizenship curriculum, which is common sense. So refocusing on that. So if we see the need for social media, you know, proper usage of social media, those students are gonna get that additional, uh, support, additional learning time lessons with a certified teacher during the WIN time. So that's new. We're really excited about that for this coming school year. The next is that we're gonna talk about is our four essential questions. This is through our PLC process that we focus on. So our early release Wednesdays, we really utilize our time wisely and we focus on that PLC. So we have our departments, our PLA department, our math department. They all come together to work on the process. Our, so this school year, we focus on our common formative assessments. Next year, one of our goals is to work on proficiency skills to support our students to continue on with their process. But these are four questions that we discuss when we set our norms, when we have our, our Glimps, our grade level problem solving meetings, our subject level vertical teaming meetings. We discuss what do students need to know and be able to do. We talk about how do we know when they learn this? What will we do when we have it? And what will we do when they already know it? These four questions are so essential that even this, when the staff does their lesson plans weekly, they identify these central questions within their lesson plan so that we know the direction that they're going into. So these are our discussions that are, are taking place all the time through our early release Wednesdays, through our morning, uh, collaboration meetings. We use our, our Branching Minds data, uh, to review, to kinda see where we need to go and how we provide that support. So that is what we're doing in that PLC process. And that's why I wanted to put this up and I feel it's extremely important to share because this really drives everything that we do, um, here at Giles School. So the next is the reflection, evaluation, and refinement. So here, this is, this plan is a working document. We're constantly reviewing it, evaluating it, refining it, where do we need to go? We're doing that process throughout the entire year. Every year, at the beginning of the school year, I laminate the infograph, which is everything, our school improvement plan condensed into a one-page document. I have a saying, if, if it's laminated, it's, it's important. So I laminate the infograph and share with every staff member. Every staff member posts that infograph in their classroom. This is a document that we constantly are reviewing, we're looking at, we're studying it. We're, we're, we need to know what direction we're going into. So that is what we constantly do. Uh, for our community, it's, uh, at, um, Curriculum Night, uh, at, uh, Fourth Grade Flyer, I'm talking about our school improvement plan, informing them, letting them know how can they know more about what we do at Giles School? How, because our goal is to not only educate our students, but also educate our community as well and give the resources and the tools for our, our families to review. So we have it on our website. So if you go to the website, as you all know, you'll be able to review that. But we wanna make sure that we're communicating with all of our stakeholders. You know, and especially as we're going through the, uh, interview process for new staff for the coming year, it's always amazing to see which interviewer needs review that data on our website and who hasn't reviewed that data. And we take that into, into consideration when we're looking to bring someone onboard at Giles School. And then finally, there's a quote that I always like to leave with everyone, is when you know better, you do better. I say that in so many, so many different times for so many different things. But it's so important because when you know better, you do better. And that's what we wanna do at Giles School is, is take the data, absorb the data, learn from the data, and then see what changes we can make so that we're making a positive, um, we're making, showing that growth. And finally, um, we are Giles made. So thank you all. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you both.
All of my good questions.
Absolutely. So I did wanna just, uh, basically celebrate, um, all of our special education staff, related services, teachers, and what. Uh, we had IUD community going up on the very state of school. So they had a lot of, uh, really focused, individual, spoken talent, really making sure that our kids are set up for success for the future. So very, very proud of them. Um, a couple of quick things is we did finish up our goal updates per our, uh, regular review of all, uh, students' IUDs, their goals. We need to make sure that they are making progress toward those goals. We did send out those, uh, trimester updates, uh, with the current grade progress report. So that went out already. Um, a lot of, uh, good data that we're seeing so far, so we could go through some of it, but really great to see how it goes. Um, ESY is currently, uh, ongoing. So for those of you who are not aware, ESY is our extended school year program. It's a unique program, only open to students with IUDs, uh, focusing primarily on regression and recruitment challenges over the school year. So if they are losing anything, tap along the break or they're not having that effective progress, that the individual, indirect invites come in and work with us over the summer. Uh, lastly, we are working actively to find out, uh, some new members of our special education staff. Uh, we're very excited to find some individuals who we believe will be exceptional, uh, special education teachers, physical therapists, nurses. Uh, we're excited to continue to build that team in the summer. So looking forward to it. That's my report.
Giles School, Mr. Gettys.
Okay, so our end of the year activities, including our eighth grade graduation, were all very successful. Um, I'd like to thank Ridgewood High School for one, once again, allowing us to use their space for graduation. I, I shout out to Mr. Rossi, amazing job. He is very flexible. He's always willing to work with us. Uh, but you know, his staff set up the chairs, they have the stage all set up, really have everything that we really need. So we really appreciate, uh, their support and that they work with us here at, uh, District 80. I'm also very proud, we had sixty-four fifth through eighth grade students that earned mastery honors all three trimesters, uh, this school year. So that is really sixty-four students. That's great through our fifth through eighth grade. It's really difficult to achieve as there's many standards across all the subject levels for, um, for our students to, to, uh, earn. So each will receive a letter at the end of the, uh, school year. We had our Giles-made assembly, there was a letter that was given to them and then also a certificate as well. The letter was for trimester three and the certificate was for our sixty-four students across all three. We had two-hundred-and-forty-five students in fifth through eighth grade that earned no referrals, uh, each trimester, the entire school year. So two-hundred-and-forty-five, that's, that's great. That's really, we, we are hitting our students, they are getting to know where, what they need to do. Uh, we're getting those benchmarks. Again, as we all know, it's our repeat offenders that we're working with to try to provide that additional support. Uh, we have eight students that earned perfect attendance for the twenty, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which is an increase from last school year. And I, that is because of the, our new communication policy, our new attendance, chronic absenteeism policy. Our assistant principals are doing an amazing job, working with families, sometimes having very difficult conversations with families. But at the end of the day, we meet the students in the classroom, learning. Um, so, but eight, that's really great. Uh, again, thank you for, to PTA for another amazing year, really wonderful, everything that they do. Uh, we're working really hard to finalize our student schedules. Our goal is to have those schedules, uh, along with a, uh, intro letter, uh, school supply list. Everything sent out early August to all of our families so that they have that information so that when they come to Curriculum Night, they're well-prepared. And, uh, and we want a successful twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, summer school, as you heard, off to a great start. And one thing I just want to, everyone listening, uh, those of you interested in participating in our, our Fall One sports, extremely important. If you wanna participate in boy's softball, if you wanna participate in girls' softball, if you wanna participate in cross-country, you must have a current physical on file. Without a physical, you cannot try out. Cross-country is not a, is not a cut sport, so we don't have tryouts. So if you wanna play cross-country, come on out. Last year, we had eighty-five students. We're hoping we have more, uh, this coming school year. Physicals are good for thirteen months, but they must have a current physical to try out. So get your physicals, be prepared for the start of school year. That concludes my report.
Lee School, Dr. Ramiot.
Yes, thank you. So, uh, just wanted to, to shout out to PTA for another successful ELA event. That show was a blast. Um, also, um, PTA also hosted a family meeting night, um, which was a really lovely event. Perfect weather, spray, there's a little, uh, coffee, uh, stuff that came out. Served up a little frappuccinos and things like that. So it was a really nice event. Um, also wanted to, uh, just add a little bit of the work that's already been in place, uh, you know, so far this summer, including having our teachers, uh, come in who were invited to participate for a five-hour planning day. So this gave them some time to prepare for next school year and, uh, you know, also, uh, giving some of that work situated for the next school year. While this school year is kinda still fresh on their minds. Uh, we also had members of our PPIS teams that met on June eleventh and twelfth for our last professional development session with W S PPIS to that community partnership grant. It was a long day, but a lot of work and a lot of those action steps led me through our school improvement plan. I just wanna add that the plan is extensive. We did have a summary of, you know, everything, uh, through our presentation. If you actually go and look through it, there are many different action steps and a lot more to do through the whole plan itself. Um, then also wanted to send a, uh, you know, put a shout out for our volunteers. We came in on June thirteenth to help do some painting in the secondary hallway. We had seven volunteers coming out and we very appreciated that support. Uh, we were able to, uh, get a nice stretch of the hallway painted and, you know, we really appreciated that, you know, that support. Right now, plans are in full swing, getting ready for, uh, the next school year. And just wanna put two state events out there, one for August nineteenth, that's our back-to-school night, uh, here at Lee, where we'll be having the supply drop-off, but there'll also be two different kinds of presentations on, uh, that night. And then also September thirteenth, uh, the PTA is doing another back-to-school bash, I believe is what we're calling it. Um, and really excited for that to return. That was similar to the event last year where the street was blocked off. We had, uh, food trucks, little dump tank thing, all that good stuff. So, um, really exciting time to create, see all the families coming out and community support. So, uh, looking forward to, to that. That concludes my report.
Just a little report, Giles, Mrs. Zerrins.
Yes, this month, we had four in-school suspensions in violation of board policy, seven colon one ninety-nine and twenty-one. And one in-school suspension in violation of board policy, seven colons, seven colon one ninety, seven, nine, and twenty-one.
If, if I may at this time, I just would like to recognize Mrs. Zerrins and thank her for all of her work, commitment, dedication, uh, at, to Giles School. Uh, we, she is a great administrator and we're gonna, uh, we're really gonna miss you at Giles School.
Probably up the street.
She's not leaving the district, she's just going to another building. So I'll still continue to see her, but really, um, she is a, an outstanding administrator and I'm very happy that she is still with us here in North School District 80. So we're gonna miss you at Giles.
I will miss Giles, but I'm, I'm just up the street, so we'll see each other often.
Thank you.
So I will, uh, present that report. Uh, Mrs. Tarnow's last official day for the school year request was, uh, on Friday. So I'll share out the report. Uh, we had, uh, three, uh, out-of-school suspensions in violation of seven colon one ninety-nine and then one in-school suspension in violation of seven colon one ninety-nine.
Four committees. There is one committee report, the committee's having that stuff. We've immersed all the topics of the monthly meetings, we're gonna get a couple of briefs. Concerned communication, is, there's some brainstorming as to what the next community newsletter is gonna be? Is there any, um, topic of what we're gonna include in the next community newsletter?
We were quickly, um, including some information on our conferences, like the leadership, the reviews, the comments, cars, libraries, we say, and what's going on.
Sounds like a good idea. For what we, discussion items?
Uh, so, um, first, as I did inform the board, just to officially inform everyone, we were awarded the computer science grant. I did speak about this in May, that was pretty long shot, but really excited that we were awarded it. This is an interesting grant because ITB has actually awarded it for FY twenty-four as the first year. So Dr. Ramiot has an opportunity to purchase in the next month, or two, fifty-one thousand dollars in materials because we do have, we get to go back to, um, January on purchases. Uh, we can use the, make the purchases until, uh, August thirty-first. So then after that, they don't have the exact amount for FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six, but we are expecting about eighty thousand dollars, which what we asked for was a teacher salary, teacher benefits, and a small amount for continuing materials and continuing PD for the teacher. So very excited about that. I did look at the ISB website, seventy-seven in our school district were awarded. This, as you recall, is a three-million-dollar total grant. So, uh, very exciting, um, that we were able to get awarded this grant right in time for our new student program coming out. Uh, to share with you some enrollment numbers, so where we are right now for twenty-four, twenty-five, we have sixty-one total students enrolled in preschool. Thirty-three students are in the AM and twenty-eight to their PM. And to follow up on the conversation we had last month, seventeen of the students of those thirty-three have siblings within Lee School. And, um, moving forward, we have sixty-four kindergartners currently right now involved, forty-seven full-day kindergartners, and seventeen half-day. And then in our first and eighth grade, we have sixteen new students enrolled at this point. Most of that, five in fact, are first graders. We do see new students in first grade typically. So we'll see where those end up, um, at, um, low for right now. But a lot of the times, we don't have people coming in to register until July nineteenth for our new students.
So that's new students, not just.
Right, that is what I said. No, I'm sorry. No, that's preschool kindergarten and, and first, first. No, that's preschool kindergarten and, and first grade, third years students. Uh, today in our consent agenda, policy one fourteen, we are asking the board to move on second grade. Uh, if you hear any questions from the board, I think those copies are actually not too second this month. One sixteen is supposed to be the one that's coming out, I know when we were talking about this for a week or so. One fifteen didn't come out just this week, uh, and it is on sheet and paper. We'll take a look at that next month on first grade and then the month after, um, August, we'll, we'll test on second grade. So we'll discuss that more in depth next month. One thing that I did want to mention to you, um, that I think as I'm looking through, and I'll, I'll talk later on on a slide about our outstanding fees, one thing that I'm noticing are families that sign up for band and don't pay that band fee, I mean, uh, so I'm proposing, we would have to do a policy change here. But I'm proposing maybe next month, we think about mirroring our kindergarten and our, our preschool language, which that language states that if you do not have that paid, and I know this is harsh, by December thirty-first, that you would not be able to attend preschool or you have to move down to, um, half-day kindergarten. I made some of those phone calls, I mean, they were tough to make, but a hundred percent of our preschool kindergarten parents do pay by the, by the DICT. And so I would like to propose a, a policy change next month, we can look at that on first grade and then we can pass that. What happens when you sign up for band is, is, uh, Google back. So what we can simply put is that statement in there and the parent would then have to say, yep, I understand that my child will be moved for band. I'm sure that's not popular, I'm sure Mr. McCarron would not like that. Um, however, I think when you are, um, putting in for something like band, you really should be paying that fee. Um, in, in a timely manner, I don't think December thirty-first is ever. If you have to, you can make a payment as small as twenty dollars on Pushpoint, you can come with five dollars to the new school office. Um, but I, I think, and I know band is, um, an investment for a family, but we shouldn't be looking at outstanding band fees in general. When the student has enrolled in the program, so I'd like to bring that to the board next month.
So, a question, can you take a look at those, um, band numbers, these, these families, they've talked about their band school fees, and then they pay, other access for them to be like, you know, they're gonna be unmasked, you know, too. And making sure that, I don't wanna say that off, even if not getting paid for it.
Yeah, good point. So, um, athletics, they have to pay, they have to turn in a check to try out. And we don't have any issue with athletics on payment, because if they don't have their check, you give their permission slip and their physical, they don't try out. Um, but, um, I can look at, uh, critical fees, of course. We do have, and I have that later in our slide, this one to follow up on critical fees, I'm gonna speak to this real quickly. We have fifteen thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars of, uh, three, three, twenty-four fees. I didn't, uh, identify exactly how much of this is banned, but, but they're actually banned. When you pay that on Pushpoint, too, it depends on where, what's the fee, you can't go in and say, oh, this was banned, this was banned. You can't lunch, because that's a book of our public of money. We do have one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars of lunch fees.
So why don't we ban just, like, um, schools where they pay for any of that stuff?
But that is another option, you have, you can't come from, you have next band.
Or even just like, yeah.
Also, you suggested maybe a half payment by the time they try out their band, they join band, does that happen anyway? Uh, it's going to be, you pay early, two twenty-two, um,
It's not more than four, the members that are...
So, so, it is one, um, one sixteen.
So...
It is a much more, you know, for a whole year of a program.
So has there ever been a parent that has given a check so that this student can try for a score and make the team and then the check boxes?
Sure.
So then, what is that, I can't remember.
Well, we, you know, we call the parents, we have a fee, we turn the fee over to them and then they, typically they do. But this, this happens and we then ask them, so that we're not gonna go another, another fee.
I have a, 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 why should you, like, for then, yeah, this is where we're looking from, how's that?
So we would be looking then for a, a policy change that band fees have to be paid at the time that you're signing up for it. I can do that, we'll just, I'll bring that to you next month and we can look at that policy.
I, I, I'd, uh, I'd like to comment, but I agree simply, uh, when applying a policy, you should try to consolidate the policies, uh, basically. Otherwise, you can keep subdividing, uh, provision to this guy, to this guy, to this guy.
Thank you, I'll bring that to you next month.
So is it two-way in a game now to make that policy change, two months?
We would start this with the twenty-four, twenty-five school, we're not too late for that, we can do that.
Now, do we have kids that haven't paid their way through the last two years, or is it just two weeks?
I believe it's just two, two, three months. And this number on this slide of fifteen thousand seven hundred and ninety is what it's worth. Lunch is an interesting area, um, because you go on and you order lunch at Gourmet Gorilla, but then you have to pay your Pushpoint. A parent gets daily, you go down and your child picks up lunch, a parent gets an email and says, oh, your child just picked up lunch, you know, whatever the cost of lunch is. Um, the state of Illinois has passed legislation that we can't actually actively, like, move to collections or try to collect lunch fees, that's either five hundred dollars for, to be, so we do try, um, but we can't deny the lunch to anybody. So, like, if you could deny the lunch process with us, trying to collect it, parents do get an email every day, your child goes, pick up lunch. So it is something we continue to work on, one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven.
Is, is there any, you know, being that Gourmet Gorilla, I think, they handle all this, like, the Pushpoint and the piece separate? They can go to Pushpoint, but it goes to a separate, where they're on top, not us?
So the systems that we're in right now don't cover, don't follow that. Uh, as you might remember, we're out to leave right now our lunch, uh, lunch bid. Um, unfortunately, we opened the bids yesterday, we only have one bidder, for Gourmet Gorilla. So we'll be continuing with Gourmet Gorilla, assuming that we're gonna go to the checks, we've sent to the state, we have, we know some steps in that before I say that officially. Um, but that's how their system works and then that's how our system works. To be honest with you, one of the things we've been talking a lot about is, you know, if you're a parent, your parent perspective, if you, you order lunch at Gourmet Gorilla, you pay your fees on Pushpoint, you need to register on, on Power School, you need to go check for a, to make sure you connect, you know, it's, it's not parent-friendly. So one of the things we want to look at is how can we take all of this and put this into, what's the system that needs all of that? Or is it, Pushpoint has a particular, the complex of this, so it's additional part two. We get a Pushpoint that would take, Push, that, I'm sorry, out of, uh, Power School, that can take all those things and put it in. We don't utilize that, we don't know enough about it. So we're gonna be spending this year, twenty, uh, four, twenty-five, studying those systems to see what would be best for us. And then perhaps we might make the recommendations to move our, to a system that's all encompassing, um, and there are some of them out there. The big thing with that is that also changes our financial system, which is just a work, a lot of work. And then trying to figure out, is that best to move our financial system, um, at the calendar end or in the fiscal end? Is that best to do that? So if we can really get that into one system, that would be wonderful for our family. Because it, it is very distorted and I can understand, you know, we just, you know, we with these things off our, because we work with them all the time. Well, in Pushpoint, it doesn't, it doesn't, and I'm just a parent, I'm like, wait, is that where grades are? Where's that where registration is, and then you don't remember the passwords and there's more different places, so, yeah, we do know there's a need for it. Get it on. Uh, so looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, um, we have, our fees will be added to Pushpoint in July. We do have an August first discount, we've had quite a few families already paying in the new school office. They should come in, drop off a check, pay right directly there, in June, that office is open. And then in July, families can pay them directly on Pushpoint. Once that year turns over, all those fees will be able to be paid there and then that, this discounter will end August first. So we want to encourage families to take advantage of that. One of the things that I wrote out here for twenty-five, twenty-six, one of the things we might want to consider adding is a late registration. Many districts around here do that. Uh, we have quite a few families that still have a register, um, even though we keep encouraging them and encouraging them and encouraging them to register. Um, and it just really delays our planning process, so we want to get people registered as quickly as we can and through that process. So that is something we might want to consider, it's too late for that now, for, for this year, but something we might want to consider. Some school districts do like a twenty-five dollar registration late fee if you register by June first, which we opened this up in April. So it is not unrealistic to think that families can go on in April and then get registered. And it's an online registration, it's not something where they have to commit for a week and have people come in and they need assistance. So, yeah, it means there's, uh, working on, um, um...
I have a good question. So, listening to the presentations today, they talked about, right, pretty significant increase in recent three years.
Correct.
So how does that impact our budget as we, as those present, how do you see the launches, like, for, for the fees? So that's what your budget has to cover?
Correct.
How, how is that affecting our budget this year?
Yeah, it's definitely caused us to not bring in as much money as we had originally planned. That's why we see a slight increase in our fees this year. Um, and all our fees moving up and all of our fees moving same, same amount. Um, because we did anticipate, we, we watched those on monthly, we get a, um, a direct list from, uh, the State of Illinois a month, um, where our funding needs number. And, and they are, I think you've seen an increase of, um, students as well. And I know you can maybe get that in those slides, but there's definitely an increase in students and an increase in students from outside the country. And, you know, who are, that also qualifies for, for any of these programs.
The increase with fees, how much does that cover, a hundred percent?
Yeah.
So what is it covering our fees?
It'd have to be those percent numbers. Um, I know for kindergarten, we are covering, you know, where we would be for kindergarten. So that is something we're certainly taking heavy looks at for twenty-twenty-seven, that fee, because that hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that we cover for kindergarten fees wouldn't be there anymore perpetually. Um, but I don't, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head on that, so I can get that one. Um, but it, it's definitely, if you do remember when we, last year, the board made a decision and a policy change not to, um, waive fees for anyone who qualifies for Medicaid. So that is a different number than that percent. So forty-four percent of students could qualify for free and reduced lunch, which we do receive some reimbursement from, uh, the National School Lunch Program. That doesn't mean that we waive all forty-four, forty-two percent, which have a number of students fees. We significantly did make a change, but I can get those numbers for you next, in fact, July first will start it, I'll give you the new year's numbers. And we'll waive.
Okay, so you're saying the whole forty-four percent is not...
Necessary to waive. But it has been a...
Exactly, my question after him, I thought it was supposed to reduce.
Yeah, we took away the Medicaid, and SNAP, CAMH, or income will waive lunch. And that's fine, you know, we give members for lunch. Um, and then the board made the decision last year not to automatically waive Medicaid. So, I mean, we knew those rough numbers that came in, I think there are about three hundred families that we, we did not waive on that. But I, I'll give that data for you, I'm sorry. But I can definitely tell you on July first, we received a list from the state of Illinois on who to waive for lunch. And then we pulled out Medicaid from that list and don't waive it. And we can get, I could say I get about forty paper applications for fee waiving. Some, some are approved and some aren't approved. If someone is, um, asking for their fees waived based on income, that we do, we do, uh, ask for proof of income and not just, like, um, his stuffs, but actually the tax. I would say, maybe half the paper for that number.
The tax, it's something that, you...
Correct. Correct. Now, since we've had those three hundred some families not qualifying directly with Medicaid, that's really been the, the goal of those forty paper applications. Hasn't been very, I mean, I'd say about that much.
So, when I qualify, you receive this?
Medicaid?
No, the ones that are now.
Correct.
The ones that are in the...
Yes. So for the state, we are, um, qualifying, sorry, for the state, they qualify for lunch on Medicaid. If, um, our policy states that we will waive families, if they qualify under the income guidelines that are tied to continuing to do school. So if you look at a waiver form, like, if you click on a waiver form on the second page, there is an income guideline. So if a family makes under that income, it's like, your family four, and you make this amount of money, then we waive it. Correct. Some still waive Medicaid. Uh, we have students who started this year, you know, whose parents had that been delayed during the year, I would see Medicaid, you know, we don't, we don't waive that. If you have income, we're certainly waiving that, that's what I'm saying. So that's nothing to faze about, we got that information in the files. Uh, follow-up on field trips, we talked about field trips, um, quite a bit last month. Um, so here's what we're looking at, some procedural changes, we've talked with the principals as well. Um, we thought in, we would collect Chevron interest before finalizing the class of the trip. So I think I shared with you that last year, we had quite a few parents who came around one of the ten. And looking at our numbers and the classes we needed, we thought, well, we can bring more Chevron. So let's keep bringing as many Chevron as we can based on the space that we have. What ended up happening is parents paid more money for the trip than the trip that it cost you, because we brought more Chevron. So we then had to refund one of that families, we can't make money every day. So we literally had to take seven dollars and twenty-five cents and give that to, you know, eighty-nine families. So what we're hoping, we don't want to do that then, because that is an administrative nightmare and just a lot of time. What we're hoping to put in place then is the Chevron interest form, like, we're planning this trip and it's gonna be April fifth. And if you are thinking you want to attend, complete the form, turn it in, and you waive it before we even send out permissions. And one of the things that I've heard quite a bit from parents, I'm sorry, from the principals, that we want to really, really, um, work on this year is that accountability to some deadlines. We gotta work on this every, I realize for you. Um, and so if you pay, this is the deadline, and this is the deadline. So if you don't turn in your interest form by that deadline, then you're not attending. And then it would then allow us to say, okay, we have twenty pet Chevron, one of the ten, can we do this? How does this work? What's the cost of the trip? And then we could actually forget. This will allow us to include more parents, guardians, which would, which is what I believe was, um, part of the focus. We can also look at alternative transportation sources, however, I did find out if we did have parents travel on that road, that would be a liability with these forms, because they are traveling to our trip. So that is something we have to consider. Um, so we're looking at improving the language on the Chevron, on the field trip forms. We talk about what that Chevron process is, so that we're very transparent and clear with everyone. One of the things that has come up too is when we have a trip, we're paying for that trip. Those fees are non-trans, non-refundable. And we've had parents that, for a number of reasons, want their money back. want their money back, and we pay for that trip. So we want to be clear on that, and our, that can improve language, and then the clear deadlines for response. We don't take as students on if they have to put their fees, so I don't, I'm not saying that that's fiction, but just within their base, that we do when they're checking. So we think going into this process for next year, we'll be able to bring more families and bring more parents, and hopefully include those parents that want to come in. Which will write up the language on this in July. Our future meetings, we have a July meeting coming up at that point, and I wanted to point this out too, because this always looks scary on an agenda when you see it, our consolidated district plan, which is improved in July, we are not looking at consolidating our district plan. All that plan is, is a plan that we spent, as we have a year that I'm like, we're going to move our grant plans in. And it takes all of our grants into consideration, we have to talk about how we're using the funds, what kind of professional development we're, we are giving, what our bills are going to be. So when you see that, please don't, don't think that it was a consolidation plan. Additional contracts we'll be looking at next month, our click management, risk management plan, our special education transportation contract, our lunch bid contract, which I mentioned a little bit about earlier, and then we should make a decision at this point after we're moving forward with our strip to Washington D.C., so we'll give those dates if we are booked, so Mr. Beatty can start working on that. I, I have not heard anything mentioned about it, should we take that over? Would you like to continue with that? Maybe with, and we've learned a lot, we've learned a lot about how we can do better with preparing our families, especially for the Washington D.C. and preparing Washington. Next, I think, it's the moment. Yeah, I think that's it, that's everything going down.
In regard to agenda, consider approval of fifteen A through fifteen F. Can I get a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Uh, can I get a motion? No, we don't need that. Maria, okay. Uh, do you have any motions, uh, need discussion?
I just had a question about Conway Bus. I know that we have, we've not had many bus companies, and hopefully I can direct this video this meeting to people that have questions, because I didn't have any problems, I didn't experience an inconvenience on the zoo trip, although we had late buses, it ended up still being a great trip, didn't inconvenience me, but I know that other parents were inconvenienced by the late return. Also, again, I don't have a child in the van, but I know several van parents expressed, they were concerned because they almost missed a van competition. So when we, do we get money back when we miss the buses, or like?
So, in the past, when they have made a mistake, they have not charged us for a bus, or, for example, the, the buses that you're referencing, or the trips, I should say, that you're referencing, we ordered three buses and we only received two buses, they only charge us for the, for the two buses. I am in constant communication with Conway Bus Company, so this is something that we're working through with the company.
So, is there like, another one that's maybe a little bit better, or? That is difficult. What we have discussed, next year, we're about to go up to bid for our special education transportation, and then we add that into the bid for all of our action. Okay, I was just curious. Is it, it, those two incidents that you speak of were, were very difficult, and Mr. Beatty, I think, he had a lot of credit, even that, especially that during the van, he was in here, he was like, wanting to buy pizza, and I do, and I show kids in cars, and really worked hard on all of that. And I will say, he does make phone calls beforehand, like, I need these lessons, or I need this. Unfortunately, they had some issues with driver, which they sure does, will not happen again, but I definitely will look at adding that into our bid. One of the other pieces of it, we're really close to thirty-five thousand dollar threshold, so we made no choice to activate that into our bid. We get over thirty-five thousand dollars to people. We're not there yet, but they do a lot of transportation costs, all of our athletics with Conway, nothing with special education, because that's a safe link, but, so in the big grand scheme of things, it was small enough, but it's definitely aggravating, and, and but I think Mr. Beatty will all work on, he really did. And we did, one of the things we have to make sure is Mr. Beatty and Dr. Beatty will not plan field trips in there, because we had three buses going somewhere for Giles, and three buses going somewhere with us, and that's stressful, you know, because they're both making sure it's a social. So that's, so we're better at communicating that, especially when you get to May, May is a tough one. Because everyone's our gift. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you. Okay, we got our motions, can we get a vote on the fifteen A through fifteen F?
Mrs. Lala? Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mr. Garrity?
Yes.
Mr. Trubut?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any board comments?
Bill Fink, so part of the presentation that stood out with me is the challenge, right? They kind of listed the future companies, temperature regulations, I'm assuming and hoping we have plans in place for these that were addressed.
Temperature regulations in VAS system?
Yes.
So when they come out and work on the VAS system for that temperature regulation, they need to have these spaces at a time.
So now, pass it.
Disability accessibility, and there's concerns over that, you know, this school and Giles Spiritville. If we can get, there, and there's been some talk of getting an elevator, we have a space here, I think, that we possibly look at that in the future. That's a very large project. Plumbing issues was when we first had the new plumbing areas, I mean, that's an issue with plumbing, that, you know, I believe that's been mitigated. Don't expect anything else from a year ago, especially. Non-functioning play space equipment is the green glitter, nothing red glitter on the spine, which has had cleared up this week, but also for last Friday, for our risk management, they could not say enough about how we're using, and just were a great job. I mean, the man who's here, certainly been here, in the past, and just completely business system. Multiple states is still waiting updates, it's my group, which one's it? We spent about three hundred thousand dollars right now on those up there. So that is, we're moving on first grade and second grade, they've already even gutted those rooms, and already cleaned in much of the areas, furniture is being ordered, it's just, it's a lot.
A lot of this, what was touched on, and plumbing's a bit of that, definitely related to old infrastructure, mechanicals of old buildings, and while we did, they started replacing all the main lines, and it wasn't optimized copper, and that's days, it is doing plumbing, which is pointed use at natural access, toilets, sinks.
Well, we've not touched that.
Right, and that, that is. They're expensive, and when, one at a time, a cluster at a time, but.
Yeah, as far as the plumbing goes to the classrooms, we did decide to take sinks up. So kindergarten has sinks and bathrooms, so they have all the plumbing. So as you mentioned, those long runs of plumbing in the hall then have to continue to upgrade the piping going into the classroom. So looking at fourth grade, we took out sinks, we put in storage. Then we really debated for a long time, we were going to do first and second grade, and it was decided we were taking out the sinks in first and second grade. So what happens is that we cut off that plumbing at the wall, so there's no reason to have to go in, which is no reason, because we gave possible asbestos is probably in there, which is just a very large cost savings for us. So those, the renovations to the classroom itself, with the light upgrades, are, are coming in much less than they would have if we had replaced all of those sink basins, as you see in that picture from Giles, the sink basin, which you see in most of the classrooms right now, I'm sorry, at we, we're, which was a big decision, we talked about this months and months and months of saying to you.
For my role, I mean, possibly, you don't necessarily need them. I would, I personally would rather see a school that has upgraded bathrooms, the actual chemicals are fully covered, and if the classroom itself doesn't always have a sink, I'd rather go that, the bathrooms really are not, I don't, I feel scared.
The, the area, we say, if it's money outside of there, we do have this, we do call here.
That's where we'll steal the turn.
Start talking a pack, that's a door.
So the, the, we did have someone coming out, come, come out to look at that area. It's probably a hundred thousand dollar project, with the drainage, because we would have to put in additional drainage, so it's not just putting turf on top of everything, it's digging down, putting like a twelve-inch base of rock, and then putting the turf on top of that. So the turf itself isn't, isn't that great deal of, of money, but that, we were probably looking at for the best of the project. So at some point, we're going to have to make a decision on where we want to go with that, because it does get, as you see in this picture, I mean, it's, it's mud. You walk through this building in April and May, while the day quarter from Citywide is doing their best to keep up with the mud, as you constantly have kids out of recess, you constantly flood it. Is there plenty of soil? And we have, we have seeded it several times, we have sodded it several times, it's, it's really, and we were not getting water in the building, but it's a drainage within this, the whole system. You know, it wasn't designed to that. One of the interesting things that I was going to share with you, we forgot about this now, that I found, is I'm packing up my office to move, are some really great pictures of the construction of that area, of the, of where the preschool was made, where my office currently was made, and just fun, these fun little pictures, I thought you might enjoy seeing, I've got a print in the air right now, it's looking out of there. Thank you, Sean. There's like, sixty-eight, it's, it's fun to look at, like, the people that are going in, and the cars, and all that fun stuff, so it might be something I'll take a look at if they're interested, but it is fun to see that kind of stuff. And I'm sure when they built it, Kevin and I, when I came over here, they really didn't get a playground for you, and they, they just built a playground on the courtyard my first year, so that courtyard was not utilized, and they were just, we let it out with six hundred kids in it. We will have the place, the preschool playground built on our date right now, is August twenty-fourth, and happy to announce we have phase one and phase two at that point, which is great. So that will alleviate some kids back there, but. It is, it is something I would just.
Any other board comments? Consider motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss the performance of competition, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, discuss a student disciplinary case, and review of closed session minutes. Grab a motion.
Motion.
Amanda, Rita, go call you.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mr. Garrity?
Yes.
Mr. Trubut?
Yes, motion passes. We will meet in the conference room?
In a minute.
In the conference room at nine P.M., which is fourteen minutes to go. We are now back to open session at ten twenty-four. Moving on to personnel action items, nineteen A one through nineteen B five. Can I get a motion? Ria, Amanda, go call please.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mr. Garrity?
Yes.
Mr. Trubut?
Yes, motion passes. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting at ten twenty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All favor, all opposing, a, the meeting is now adjourned.